Hey, seat.
They don't know that.
They don't know that.
And Freddie's moving.
Yes. Welcome to the meeting of the Central Texas College Board of Trustees. Member of the day will not present. Please. I pledge allegiance to Texas. Texas flag. Please join me in the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas.
See if Rex knows the other one. Is that legal, Rex?
I don't know. We have a former president. Telephone with us? Oh, he's on his way up? Okay. This meeting is being recorded. We have a virtual agenda. Both sides of the discussion consider a motion to propose adoption of a no new revenue tax rate for the Dallas County tax.
Yes, sir, and I can, I can slow roll this a little bit for Mr. Armstrong to get here. This meeting is required by the truth in taxation laws that the comptroller has laid out for us. We are coming here today to propose a tax rate. And the rate that the administration is recommending that the board adopt is the no new revenue tax rate, which is, for those of you that have been on boards for any amount of time, is the rate that used to be called the effective rate. Same thing, new name. So it is the no new revenue tax rate. And I'd like to, if I can, just drag here a minute, pretend I'm coughing or something, because we, we have to record in the paper. And on our website, everyone who was in attendance and not in attendance and how they voted. Maybe wait for dawn to come, so how about I will share with you what our recommendation is that we potentially could have a motion as a discussion. Make the time fit. The rate that has been calculated is point one two one eight for one hundred dollars valuation, which is down from the point one two nine seven significantly. It should generate the same amount of tax on the same property that was on the books last year versus this year. And then there will be some additional revenue related to new property that was not on the books last year that will be on the books this year. So the recommendation from the administration is to adopt the no new revenue rate, which is point one two one eight. Yes, sir, Bell and Coriel both, we feel that there'll be a slight increase. However, in the planning for this, and considering that when we did make this recommendation still to adopt this rate, we are also planning that collections may not be at the same level they've been in the past because of everything with the pandemic. So we have factored that into our, into our calculations. Okay.
We're trying to record it, so.
So.
Can you hear me?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this on? Yeah. So I, I thought it was like regardless, if, if a property is occupied or not, the taxes stay there unless you have a property tax exemption.
Sir, the tax is based on the property and then the individual on the property. So the initial, the initial calculation involves the actual value of the property. Then exemptions are made based upon who lives there and what they've applied for and what they qualify for.
Like a business building is always gonna be property taxed, always.
Unless, unless there has been an agreed to abatement.
Abatement.
Which at the present time, the only, the last one that we had was related to Seton Hospital. But that expired in the current tax year, so that will not exist in the upcoming.
Isn't there an abatement over at Five Hills Shopping Center also?
There's not an abatement, what that is, is a tax increment zone, and actually, it's not in Five Hills. It's, it's the one that used to be the college property before you were on the board next to the airport. I think that was gonna be called. I can't remember, it had an Italian name to it, but I can't remember what that center was called. It did not go through. So it is still part of that tax increment zone. We have several tax increment zones that were involved in, but we don't have any abatements. And what, what those do is, we in turn will pay our money that we collect on the property in that area back to the local increment zone, which General Weaver sits on the board. And, and ultimately what happens is they can disperse funds to better improve that area with the anticipation that the improvements that they make will increase property taxes significantly past what we would have collected in the years that we paid up the tax.
Now, the tax improvement zone that we got first that I set on, initially proposed a shopping center, living area, I don't know, all kinds of stuff. We sold some property adjacent to the airport. Yeah, to that particular corporation. And then we had a very bad downturn in the economy almost simultaneous with that. We did get our money, but they backed off of building that, so. It's still, it's still a limbo, and nothing's been done, but the money's still being collected. And so far, a little over a million dollars in that account, none of it's been spent. But it's available, if any company comes in and meets the criteria, they can get a tax abatement so as they can get some money for new construction or remodeling of existing buildings.
Are we on the list for early payment discount?
Yes, sir, we provide, we provide a discount for early payment. We provide, we provide an early payment discount, and we, we provide a exemption for seniors. We don't provide every exemption out there, we made the votes several years ago, but, but those are two that we did.
I, I don't believe we have an early payment discount.
That, that one, that one, sir, the county, you don't think CTC has that one?
The college doesn't do that.
I'd have to look, I can't remember. The number would be, the number would be so small.
So when I brought it up several years ago, everybody voted against it because Coriel County doesn't recognize that, we have to treat everybody equal.
Yeah, I remember we had a, we had a meeting, and there was two votes that day, and one was for and one was against, and the for was the, was the senior exemption.
But the other exemptions like the disabled veteran.
All the state exemptions, you don't have a choice.
Over sixty-five, those still automatically apply if you ask for them.
Correct.
I have exemption, that kind of stuff. Those haven't changed. Okay, let's go ahead, make your recommendation.
The recommendation that the administration makes is to go with the no new revenue rate of point one two one eight per hundred dollars of valuation, which is down from the current rate of point one two nine seven of hundred dollars of valuation.
Show both.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion on that motion? If none, I'd ask everybody who was in favor of the motion to raise your hand, please. That is unanimous. Next item on our agenda is announcement of the time and location of regular board meeting for Tuesday, August the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, at one P M. And right now, it'll be in the setup right here. And with that, we are adjourned until workshop starts at one o'clock.
Whoever's listening could actually.
Okay. That's, that's cool. No. You know anybody with a dad's?
I don't. That nose looks.
No, no, he listens.
Yeah. I, I gave the YouTube address to David Morris, he's the publisher of the Pop's Believe Press, and they're supposed to be listening on. I talked to him this morning, he said he's still planning to listen.
That's good. Over the years, he's talked about having meetings at different times. Really, really interesting.
Yeah, yeah, that's all. I just got it.
Yeah, I did too. You know, see, see, he can't, he can't, you're stuck. Can't rearrange it, so the college doesn't.
Right.
That's the problem. Yet we still gotta have it back in the state.
Be nice to have a, if our fiscal year started on one October instead of one September. That would be good.
Well, if you look at page sixteen, the number I was looking for is actually short. Six hundred and seventy-six thousand.
We still drop for that rate, though?
Yeah, because the, the problem is, is they cut the expenses about as much as they can. Until this thing gets over, I thought that was gonna be worse.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm surprised because. The thing is, I know people are hurt, and I know a lot of people staying home. But question is, why aren't they coming to school here instead of going to places like U N D and U H and U T or A N? To stay put at home with their children, with their parents, the weekend. Going to school, I think, for three, for three weeks. That wouldn't make sense. We should be bursting in the scene.
What was the thing? Especially when they're not gonna have a full college experience.
I have my college degree, so I still wanna go out to the national. I wanna welcome liberty to my, my mansion.
I got, I got.
Got the master's and a chief.
I got my bachelor's, you know, university diploma, bootstrapped.
Was it the precursor to the U, University of Carolina, the first college?
No, no, that was, that was, that was on base. This was kind of the class involved.
Well, were you even on? So you were stationed for three days.
So. And I got, in fact, I used to have a last junior membership. And I'm asking before the state, before the U N D, before the Alabama. I fully went into the third term before I got back out of Florida. I was there last four years.
When I finished my bachelor requirement, I would still, when I passed. I finished, I still had two months to go when I finished my, when I was finishing my last, last bachelor. Now, across the stage over the house, see, like, four months later. Right, right, I mean, I was like, I'm deployed in combat, we're reaching the last class.
I took, what, two classes to get home, and the one of them. We're going strictly. Class, start, you know, strictly.
I got my, I got my hundred percent letter of experience. For, for the, the table. And my daughter, just, she's about to finish up her post nine eleven, so after post nine eleven, I checked her birth. Now she doesn't have to go five, but you can't give thirty-three, thirty-five, thirty-five. Thirty-five is tied with the living expenses. So she still got the all of the tuition, and she can still get everyone twelve, thirty-five a month for living expenses.
Well, that's pretty good.
No parking that I never want to tell. Well, look, I earned mine, my body beats that hard.
Test, test, test one, two. Test one.
My employees, they know, make sure I don't. My back is that sharp, my upper knee, and my, my right knee, and I got flash shadows. You know, they, you know, I must have been really good, good shape. You know, like, I like wearing shirts from a company that's armed, really armored, sort of company, from the grunt staff, T-shirt. They, they got a shirt out now to embrace the side. I mean, most of it's in military understanding, breaks aside. If, if no, it hurts, just deal with it. Range you up, and come on. And I'm, I'm so tempted by one of those shirts. My wife is a thirty percent position, right? She be in B, or she herself be in B D. You know, a profile was, it's a discretion, it's a dialogue. But it made her know, don't mess with someone's profile. Well, she let her, he let her be a robot for thirty days. She wouldn't back here, and she said she'd feel hurt. He put her on a belt, that escort shoved up the Burma hop. And in those missions, they, like, seventy-five pounds, rock, full of rations, weapons, everything, right? Last thing you wanna see is someone gonna take your weapon. She dismounted the train, left it gave out, she hit the ground. She, she's never been the same since. And it's, it's a good, good. She gave up, been the same since.
Some. I have. I'll be retired as soon as I'm ready.
Oh, sorry, wow. I'm a, as in, this must have told me eight to me. Four years. Wow, I joined the army in January, eighteen six. You were almost in my position back then.
I have a guy. A major sent me home to church a couple of months ago. He made some comment, it's the first time I've followed him. The guy said, he said, how are you? How much, thirty years? Of course, my goals to live, to be a man of the people.
And how long were you on that duty?
It paid twenty-two, it was actually fair.
I was twenty-four years, ten months. And then overall, that was in the reserves first. Now, where there's twenty-six and eight, all the way.
So you, well, on the old case has to be retired, I mean, twenty-six year.
Yes, I, I, yes, I did. Because I get, my retirement is sixty-two or sixty-three percent.
I don't know. Now, it was, it changed all that stuff around.
Yeah, I was, I retired. You retired under high three. I retired under, no, I was in high three also. But when I, when I joined, I, I made it by six months. Uh, before we. So, well, we, you said you retired in eight? Oh, no, so you were, you were final pay.
Yeah.
You, you were final pay, and then they had the high three, which I was in, and then six months after I was going on, they went to B dot. I'm so glad I was in the high three, because, you know, because if you, if you were in high three, and you take the, I mean, if you were in B dot, it was like, if you take the thirty thousand dollar bonus, you're retired forty percent, that twenty years.
I tried to figure that out, I was talking to a guy, he never played. This makes it all go on the DM system. Grandson lost. I retired out of the Air Force, he retired, I think it's thirty-five percent. At fifteen years, but he, but he kept it in retirement.
I would do that.
No, but the Air Force had a forty, forty-five years. They run for two years. As far as I know, that's a high year.
I have a plan that you charge, you got subsidies or whatever. You'd be charged from the Air Force in B five, like, twenty years, and working, because it's greater than that. I would figure out a way to stop in sixty, seventy, and the Air Force is hard.
Air Force is hard. I wasn't, well. I was in NSA assignments, just, I was in, in private service, by the Air Force. Army guys usually keep several, one, two grades, seven. Air Force staff, you can, why, like, first movement is zero, first act is, is top, thirty percent, in B five. Had a massive, it's a, it's a, it's a, Russian moves, and it's trippy, and he was getting my E P S.
Well, I could tell you. Starting the first class. Twenty-four years, ten months active. That would be point sixty, sixty-three percent. After tractor taken out, dental taken out, and taxes. Could be a total of about two hundred dollars. I'm making twenty-six, thirty-seven a month, so. So I'm, my retirement check in the army is like twenty-eight hundred dollars. That ain't bad.
No.
That's not bad, and then a hundred percent, really, was forty-two hundred dollars. And then my wife gets about a hundred and sixty. Would, are you, do you have a rate? Do you have, do you have a V A rate?
Not seventy.
Seventy? Not at all. Seventy percent, that's a. I could tell you.
No, fifty.
It can read, like, check.
There's really nothing wrong with it, except I don't have a bad back.
You know, over fifty percent. You know, well, they're closed, but right now, but you need a license, V A, E P, approved.
Yeah.
That's where I got.
I got one pair, I got one pair. And I couldn't see.
Well, they subbed it out to a, to a mercenary class. Well, it used to be on the same floor as, uh, opener.
I, I was sweating up on that. Well, for my public, we over there, it's all working. He said, they over there, I didn't, I didn't. I gotta start out. Went on, took.
I took a lot, well, I retired at sixty percent. Until like last year, I went to ninety percent. So that's the last of all. I mean, you don't, I'd be hurt all the time for a flash out. And this. So it'd be, I don't know. It didn't hurt, it hurt.
Everybody I know that goes on apples, they don't wanna make it too easy for everybody.
Pass the buck.
Whatever it takes, get the job.
Well, if you need the junk bucks, you can, you can, you can, they're saying everything's all. There you go. Was it pre-conditioned or what?
What?
One o'clock.
Okay. Welcome to the workshop of the Central Texas College District. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public upon request.
This meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public upon request. Members of the public may access this meeting as follows. HTTPS, semicolon forward slash forward slash CTC four dot M E forward slash B O A R D W zero eight. Now is an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or address topics of interest with presentation limited three minutes. I've added this form, anybody should. Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Uh, next item is the chancellor's update, Mr. Knopf.
We have a couple of things. Uh, first, I received a letter from the City of Colleen Office of the City Manager, uh, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two. Uh, Mr. Weaver is currently serving a term that expires on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty. And they're asking for a replacement or an extension of him. So we'll put this on the, uh, board, uh, workshop agenda for next, next month and, uh, take care of it at then. So y'all can be thinking about that.
John?
Yes, sir.
We all are common there, uh, there for being interested and concerned in being there.
Noted, yeah. Thank you.
I will continue to serve if you want me to.
Okay. Uh, the other thing I'd like to mention before we get into some of these other reports. You know, we are in, in the midst of our fifth year review right now for SACS COC. And, and part of that review, uh, under the, uh, principles of accreditation is that we have a mission, uh, statement, uh, that, and, and part of that mission statement must be, uh, reviewed regularly by the Board of Trustees. And so what, uh, we looked at was a briefing by Dr. Garrett once every two or three months. Or, and her, her recommendation was, we include that on the board packet, which we have done. So the mission statement and the vision statement of Central Texas College is on that packet for your review every month. And, uh, and that is a requirement under section two, which is, uh, on the mission and then section four point two A, which is governing, uh, governance. So, uh, if you would, just kind of glance at that because, uh, if the onsite committee shows up and asks questions and they ask you if you, if you're familiar with the mission and vision statement, you must say yes, right? Yes, because you have it there. So, okay. Uh, every month, every month. Uh, okay, Dr. Carter, I believe you are up with, uh, phase four of campus reopening. And, uh, some other information on, on some of the things that she oversees.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me? Do I need to move the mic?
Yeah, closer.
Okay. Just you know, let's say closer. That better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ready, can you hear? Okay.
Okay, good deal. Good afternoon. Uh, as Ms. Knopf said, I have a couple of items here to update you on, first being, uh, the campus reopening. We are in phase, we are about to, uh, begin phase four on Monday, August twenty-fourth. On that day, we will bring back one hundred percent of our faculty, uh, staff, except for those who will, with a few exceptions, some who will continue to work remotely for various reasons. But we will be one hundred percent back to work and no more business interruption paid. So everyone will pull their weight, so to speak. Um, employees have done an excellent job in complying with all of our safety guidelines, as well as those established by the CDC. Uh, we've had no major issues, so we are so grateful, uh, for their support and their cooperation in that transition back to campus. Um, included in this update, I would like to tell you that during, um, the last two phases, we did have eleven positive COVID nineteen cases. Um, seven have recovered, three are still out, one was a student who didn't return to campus. So that was in a two-month period. I, I would like to note though, that the transmission did not take place on campus. So, um, they, they contact, contracted COVID outside of campus, just in, in their daily lives. So, um, with the exception of career technical or hands-on courses, instruction will remain online during phase four. And, uh, student support services will continue to be provided by appointment only and, uh, remotely. In a couple of minutes, you'll hear from the DC, some of the enrollment initiatives, uh, that we've taken. And so Dr. Adie and Dr. Garrett will expound on, on what they're doing in their areas. Um, several areas that were previously closed during the pandemic, uh, will reopen. Some have opened this week and last week. So, uh, if you'll recall from the reopening plan, we had several, uh, areas that were, uh, closed through phase three. So, uh, beginning this month, the library will reopen on Monday with limited services. The planetarium will reopen on Monday. Staff has already come back to gear up for that. We will be serving, uh, at a, at a occupancy of twenty-five percent, twenty-five percent occupancy. So that's about thirty people at a time. Uh, so we're going to try that. The Child Development Center reopened yesterday. Um, they will ultimately serve a max of twenty-four students, but as of today, I believe they had eight students, uh, eight children, uh, at the center. Bookstore reopened on August tenth, twenty-five percent capacity again. They've in, implemented, uh, several measures to control the traffic and the number of people coming in and out. They will continue with their online service and curbside service as well. And then, as you saw, dining services, um, started back up on August tenth. And so they will continue to provide grab and go type services. And, uh, the, the dining area downstairs will be limited to, uh, approximately eighty-five folks. So that gives us about, uh, twenty-two percent occupancy there. So, and Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Harmsen have worked, uh, together diligently on spacing that out. So. Okay, any questions on our campus reopening? Okay. Europe, we recent, the Europe Small Arms Maintenance Contract, which we've had since nineteen ninety-six, is scheduled to end on September thirtieth of this year. So the government went through a rebid process. We were successful. We did, we were awarded the contract last week, um, signed for it. The term of the contract is October one through September thirtieth. And the Small Arms Maintenance Contract is a military occupational skill contract in which we provide small arms maintenance courses to soldiers stationed in Europe. And we train them to be their unit armor. So they will ma, they will maintain the weapons room. They will maintain small weapons, handheld pistols, shoulder rifles, uh, those sorts of things. So they will be completely in charge of their, their armory, if you will. Um, the value, the three-year contract value is one point three million dollars, about a little over four hundred thousand a year. Uh, and that, what's significant about this is in previous years, and Mr. Liberty can help me here. In previous years, we've kind of used economies of scale because we had enough business over in Europe whereby we could get the govern, we could cut the government a deal and spread some of the costs amongst the various contracts. However, you can see from the numbers that is no longer viable, uh, for us or feasible. So what we did with this contract is we priced it completely standalone. That means every, every cost associated with the contract, uh, was put into, into the pricing. And so just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, in two thousand fourteen, when we had the contract, using economies of scale and spreading those costs, we spent, the cost to the government was about seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and I just told you that today, the contract price, same, same three years is one point three million. And so we are, we feel pretty good about the fact that, uh, we did that. The government accepted it through a series of negotiations, put Mr. Gonzalez through some changes, but ultimately they accepted. And, uh, we're pretty proud of that fact, so. And those are the two items that I have. Any questions?
No, I was just saying, good. I do have a question. And forgive me for my ignorance. I saw an article online last week where Gravember and Beal Sector are being closed to do those arm. And I thought our small arms operation was at Beal Sector.
It is.
It is.
You don't have any information about it being closed down?
No.
No. Better check that out because this was one USAA report that says that they're, they're being closed out.
Okay, well, they signed a, the government signed a contract last week.
Well, we found in the files, that don't mean anything.
Yeah. Well, I'll follow up on that, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just curious, that's all.
Sure, sure. I'll follow up on that and, and report back.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sir. Any more questions? Yes, ma'am, and I believe you're referring to the news link. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Mr. Gonzalez? And while Ted's getting ready, uh, I'd like to say a couple of words about, about this. First of all, this, uh, what you're going to hear is a presentation that, that is a culmination of about three and a half years worth of work. And, uh, two gentlemen that actually started this initiative, uh, with me, uh, three and a half years ago, uh, Dr. A doctor, uh, General Tom Schwartz and, uh, uh, Major General, a retired, uh, Jeff, uh, hey, Jeff Miller. And, uh, so anyway, it, it was because of those two individuals that, that this has, has come about. And it was not easy. They gave of, of a lot of sweat and blood of their own, uh, to do this. And we didn't, we didn't hire them. We, we don't hire, uh, uh, people to come in and, and help us with these things. Unfortunately, we don't have the dollars to do that. So they graciously gave of their own time and money, uh, to do that. And I'd like to personally thank them. And we'll, we'll hear from them probably in, in October, uh, at the workshop. I'd invite them to come back to a board meeting or the workshop. But I just wanted you to know that those two people were totally instrumental in making this happen. Uh, the other one that they grabbed a hold of, Jonathan Cuff with Ford Motor Company is, is around here somewhere. And, uh, so anyway, they, uh, they, they cornered him to, to help with the attorneys at, uh, Ford Corporate. So that's been a, a huge, uh, a huge undertaking. But I just wanted to recognize those three individuals for all they had, had done for us and over the years. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon, members of the board. It's our pleasure to present to you today the Technicians of Tomorrow CSP program. Our agenda for today will include evaluating the market demands for technicians, the Ford Technicians of Tomorrow program and Ford's investment in the program. Mr. Jonathan Cuff of Ford will be our presenter for this content. The next item on the agenda will be an evaluation of the curriculum. And for this presentation, Mr. Ronnie Turner, Department Chair of Industrial Technology, will be our presenter. Real quick, I'd just like to say a few words about Mr. Cuff. Mr. Cuff is for, is the Ford Motor Company Parts and Service Operation Manager for the Dallas Region, which provides oversight of all the North Texas dealers and all dealers located in the state of Oklahoma. Mr. Cuff has been instrumental in making this program a reality. We very much appreciate his help and time of day in presenting to you the CTC Board of Trustees. Real quick, before I hand it over to Mr. Cuff, I just want to take a moment to share with you this slide. Um, I think many times when we discuss what it takes to build a program, it's not really easily visioned, um, how many people's hands it takes in order for us to take something from the ground up. And so I just wanted to show you real quick, all the various partners that it took for us in order to put this together. Obviously, without Fort Hood, we'd have no program, um, to serve the troops. Uh, the Texas War Force Commission has come on as a partner to help us hopefully sponsor the cost for soldiers and potentially other items such as parts. Um, then you have ASC, a nationally recognized, uh, accrediting service, whose vice president actually came down to the college in order to help us understand what we needed to do to raise ourselves to a lever, level commiserate and understood by the industry. And in doing so, we actually had about sixty or seventy of local community leaders and business owners come and descend on the college to evaluate what we had and to help us get a better understanding on what we needed to do to hopefully service them one day by providing, uh, potential employees. And then finally, uh, Ford Motor Company, it's not just Ford Motor Company, it's all of their North Texas dealers. Um, and really, I would even go, it's really all their dealers. If you saw our contract, you would see there's at least a hundred plus dealers names that have committed to the program, um, in hiring our, uh, students. And then finally, um, as well, uh, you have the generals, uh, General Schwartz and, uh, General Miller, who have really contributed a lot of their time in helping us operate and broker this deal. With that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Mr. Cuff.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
My name is Jonathan Cuff. I'm the Parts and Service Operations Manager for Ford. So it's my pleasure to speak with you today. We're going to talk about a subject that I'm really grown to become very passionate about over the course of the last two years. And it's been about a two-year buildup that it's taken us to get to where we're at here today. So, uh, many thanks to General Miller. He's been a partner of mine over the course of these last two years. So we're very excited to share with you our plans and really what we're looking to do to go ahead and to grow our population of technicians. Um, one of the things that, uh, kind of dating back two years ago, how this relationship got started. General Miller had established a relationship with one of our very important dealers, Sam Pack. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Sam, but Sam's been a, uh, a legacy dealer of Ford Motor Company, very, very prominent dealer up in the Dallas area. So Generals Miller and Schwartz had, uh, worked with Sam about trying to address the needs, not only to go ahead and help soldiers transition into the active workforce after years of service to the country, but also to fulfill a really important need, and that's with technicians. Um, Sam is very passionate about technicians. About thirty years ago, he got together and helped launch our first asset program, which is really Ford's kind of crown jewel in terms of technical training. It's a two-year apprenticeship degree or associate degree that we've got. And Sam helped get that going. So Sam also recognized that there was a terrific need working with the military. So he connected us with, uh, General Miller and we started to work on this plan. So it's taken a little bit of time to get us to where we're at here today. But we're really excited to be on the cusp of launching something that we believe is going to be a very important program that's going to impact the lives of men and women at Fort Hood, as well as our dealer body. So as you can see on this screen, you know, there's a huge national demand when it comes down to automotive technicians. You know, over the course of the five years, this organization called TechForce, which is a consortium of OEMs and other interested players within the aftermarket that looks at things like staffing needs for the technical trades, really looked at the industry and recognized that there was a pretty big shortfall. And that shortfall in terms of technicians into the industry was pretty significant. As a matter of fact, they looked at about seventy thousand techs short each and every year. Now, as you can see, you know, they've kind of, uh, trended that over the three, four-year period in time. And as you can see, over a four or five-year timeframe, we're looking at a shortfall within the industry of about three hundred and fifty thousand technicians. Now, I will tell you that, uh, COVID-nineteens had an impact on our business. Like anything else, we're learning to understand what the dimensions are of that. Granted, we, we saw some short-term disruption in terms of volumes coming into our dealerships, into the repair shops. But beyond that, uh, we're starting to recover and build back up where we're starting to see our business flatten off year over year. So despite the impact of COVID, this issue still becomes an issue that's, that's being dealt with on a national basis. Now, you know, if you look at, there's a demand out there, what are we doing across the educational institutions to go ahead and feed that demand? Well, as you can see, the number of completions across automotive students within the United States continues to, to fall, yet the demand is still pretty large. And you step back and look at that and try to understand what's driving that. And we, we've seen that generally speaking, as people have looked and maybe migrated away from the trades, that there is a huge opportunity and there's a significant demand from industry for these individuals. But we got to work with the educational institutions to recruit young talent into these programs. And then not only work them through and help them graduate, but make sure that they possess employable skills that will translate into the repair shop. So as we've seen this supply drop over those years. Now, you know, we talked about the need for technicians across the industry, and I'll start to kind of hone that into Ford Motor Company. But you can see that we're looking to go ahead and replace those men and women that are currently within the trade that are retiring. Each and every year, we. Each and every year, we see, in other words, between 5% of our workforce start to go ahead and start to retire. And as the years mount up, that number increases. So when we looked at that number, and you saw that on the preceding slide, that the annual demand's about 70,000 technicians. Now, we talked about the fact that Ford looks at, tracks, and measures the number of technicians that we've got in a geographical area. We also take that number and we divide it by how many Ford and Lincoln vehicles are considered units in operation that exist in that area. And that's used as a mechanism that we can understand what our service capacity is to be able to provide parts and labor service to customers that need, whether it's a warranty issue for those vehicles that are still within the bumper-to-bumper warranty, or for those customers that need customer pay service to keep their Ford on the road. So when we measure things like techs per thousand, we notice that the state of Texas is about 14% under the nation. Okay, so what does 14% really translate? When I actually do the math and I look at how many techs that were short across the state of Texas alone, that number is about 700. Okay? So as we start to really look at this and to mention this, we've got a real task to make sure that we have adequate staffing within our repair shops. So what's the impact if we don't have these technicians? So if customers come to our dealers, and whether it's a warranty need, or if they're coming in for basic maintenance or repair, oftentimes that dealer will lack enough service capacity to be able to handle the volume of business that comes through their door. So this is where dealers have told us, we've got to work together to really address this concern. So why did we focus on the military? Well, let's face it, across the state, we've got an ample supply of soldiers with roughly 16 bases across this state. And I think the number is 160,000 active-duty personnel. So there's certainly a volume of people that reside within the military. When we go out and talk to our dealer bodies, our dealers tell us that the soldiers tend to be more mature, more disciplined, and punctual than the early-entry employees that we've been looking at pulling from high schools and other programs on that front. So we understand that each and every year that the military is transitioning thousands and thousands of soldiers. It creates a terrific opportunity for us to go to that well and see if there's an opportunity to fill those position vacancies through qualified members through the military. So with that, we've built the Ford Technicians of Tomorrow Career Skills Program. And what TOT is, it's a 16-week accelerated training program that seeks to be able to train those soldiers how to be productive within the repair shop. Okay, so what we will do is we will go ahead, we will enroll our dealers in the program. And these are dealers that have an interest in working with soldiers, and these are dealers that have an immediate staffing need. And we will go ahead and try to identify those dealers. And once we've enrolled those dealers, we will serve up candidates to those dealers because through Sergeant Major Tony Waller and the task organization, he will be on base as the primary recruiter, looking for competent, capable men and women who have an aptitude for mechanical work. Potentially, maybe these were men and women that worked as a 91 Bravo as a wheeled vehicle mechanic, or maybe they had some other impact on hydraulic systems. That individual might be the right fit coming into the Technicians of Tomorrow program. But as they do it, they're going to go through that 16-week accelerated training program. Well, we'll go ahead and teach them and train them all the core components that's going to be necessary to be a Ford technician. So we've laid out the curriculum as it stands. And what we've done is we've identified four primary certifications that we'll look to provide to the soldiers that participate in this program: electrical, steering suspension, brakes, and climate control. Those are four certifications that assuming that the soldier passes the class, they'll award that industry credential. Okay? That certification is something that will allow that soldier the ability to process Ford warranty when they're hired in the repair shop. So from a dealership perspective, it's a very valuable certification to have. As you can see, we've also kind of peppered in some additional classes as well to help round out that soldier's curriculum to make sure that they're prepared for and ready to join us in the repair shop itself. Anything like warranty and policy, because warranty will be an important part of what they do, it's very important that that technician understands what Ford's requirements are to get paid on that warranty claim. We talk about the three Cs. What's the concern? What's the cause of the issue? And then ultimately, what are you doing to resolve that? And that's ultimately what we're going to be teaching and training these soldiers to get prepared for. In addition to that, things like writing skills are going to be very important because that technician will have to tell that story that shows and demonstrates that you've met those three Cs, that you've clearly articulated what the concern is, what is their root cause, is it a warrantable failure? And have you used the repair shop manual to go ahead and to solve that problem? So in addition to the in-classroom time, what we've done is we've integrated four weeks of what we call in-dealership apprenticeship. And if we're doing this, one of the things that we did is we took a page out of the playbook of asset. Okay, there are certain tech schools that feature just simply classroom training. And then there are tech schools that intermix both classroom and repair shop training. What we generally see is the students that go through that type of training with the hands-on experience do much better than those that just simply focus on the classrooms itself. So we hope to go ahead and intermix that in-dealership apprenticeship, where we're going to be providing that soldier with specific task lists that they have to complete during that week. And we're sequencing them approximately three weeks apart so that we're allowing that soldier to come back and forth between the dealership that sponsored them into the class so that they can start to get to know their future coworkers and become situated, but at the same time reinforce the curriculum that was taught in the preceding weeks. So for example, after they complete the electrical block, we're going to partner them up with a technician working on voltage drops and other electrical-related repairs so that the individual can understand kind of that practical application of that which we taught them in the preceding weeks. We think that this is such an important part of the success of the program going forward. So I mentioned sponsorship. Ultimately, we're looking for our dealers to sponsor the soldiers through this program. Okay, so to that degree, we're asking those dealers to go ahead and pay the $27.50 enrollment fee into the program. Okay, we're also asking the sponsoring dealer to pay that soldier's hotel expenses while they're in their home market, working at their dealership. Okay, that way that we provide to the soldier, and it doesn't cost the soldier any money when it comes down to that. The next items are really going to be core to our success, and that's the mentor training and development that the dealership could provide because they have a vested interest, and they must be actively involved in this if we're going to be successful with this outcome. We're going to ask that dealership coach or champion to stay connected with our instructors and to get updates on how their soldiers are progressing through the program. And then we'll also look to touch base with that individual after the soldiers completed their week of apprenticeship. How did Jonathan do? What was his strengths and weaknesses? So that we can make sure that there is a kind of connection between the instruction as well as the feedback from practical, hands-on experience. So as you can see, kind of what forecasted what the average dealer expense is looking at per soldier, and that's $27.50 for the base into the program. And we forecast the cost of about $2,000 for the cost of the housing during that four weeks of apprenticeship. So with that, we are currently working through with the Texas Workforce to be able to go ahead and to provide a soldier toolkit upon completion of the program. One of the things that we see across this trade is that individuals that are starting up as technicians oftentimes face pretty significant financial burdens associated with the investment that they need to purchase the tools that they're going to use to be able to make a living. Now, to that degree, Ford didn't make me buy my own laptop or my own supplies. And herein is a rub that we've got to figure out within our industry how to remove this barrier if we're going to go ahead and attract more young talent to the industry. So through Texas Workforce, we're going to provide a starter toolkit to that soldier so that they've got everything that they need to be productive into the repair shop. And we also believe that that's going to be a nice draw to the soldiers to consider joining this program as well. So here's some of the other program startup costs that the Texas Ford dealers are bearing when it comes down to that. We've got five training vehicles that I've got listed up on the screen. We're going to be working to procure those five vehicles. You'll notice that those vehicles are of different age and different make. So I've got a Lincoln up there. I've got a couple of different Ford products. Those vehicles are hand-selected because they're integrated within our curriculum with specific labs that we've done through Ford engineers to be able to ensure that we deliver the right training and curriculum on that front. So we're looking at $120,000 investment on that. There's unique proprietary equipment that the dealership technicians will have to get used to, things like the VCMM that you've seen pictured up on the screen. That's a scan tool that Ford dealership technicians use. So we're looking at roughly $56,000 of unique tools and equipment into the program as well. And then on top of that, we mentioned that there is ongoing dealership investment of that. So I'm trying to quantify that Texas Ford dealers are all in when it comes down to seeing through the success of this program on that front. So within this, we're working on launching a pilot program. For us, it's very important that we work out the kinks and really start to understand how to pilot this thing and to bring this program to life. So we've gone ahead and we've started to work on a pilot program. We've currently got 10 dealers identified that we'll be working with as pilot dealers. I've gone and selected some of our best and brightest dealers, things like Five Star Ford of Dallas, Park City Ford in Dallas, Planet Ford in Houston, Jordan Ford in San Antonio, McCree Ford in Dickinson, Texas. And some of these dealers are some of our best dealers in the state of Texas with very engaged ownership. Those stores, we've asked participate in this pilot program to be able to help us launch this program. They're interested in not only receiving the candidates that come out of this, but will have an impact on our ability to go ahead and to be able to bring this program to life. So talks about launch pilot class in September. It's looking like the first day of class is going to be October 5th. We're currently in the process of recruiting and identifying candidates for the program. General Miller tells me he's got seven soldiers that they believe would be good candidates for the program. And what we'll start to do is share those candidates with our enrolled dealers, have them review their credentials to see if there's any interest in that individual candidate, conduct an interview via Zoom call, or we're allowing that dealer to drive up here to interview that soldier in person if they want. And if they choose to sponsor that soldier, we'll lock them in, and we're going to go ahead and fill our first cohort group that's going to start on October 5th. So that's going to allow us to get up and running. Now, that program's going to take us through first part of January. Well, we'll look to graduate that first cohort group about the third week of January. And then after we do that, we'll integrate the learnings that we've built through this pilot process, parlay that into a full program launch in the first quarter of 2021. And then what we'll do is launch across all dealers within the state, give them access to enroll in the program, and then we would start the sequencing of recruiting and identifying candidates for them and to potentially get them into one of the Technicians of Tomorrow classes that's going to start sequencing in an eight-to-10-week sequence over the course of next year. We hope to get anywhere between 75 to 95 technicians out of the program next year as we start to kind of build this thing up. It's going to be very important for us to get high-caliber individuals that are well-trained, that possess the skills that our dealers require. So to that degree, we'll go ahead and work to go ahead and wrap that up. So with that, I figure we're about ready to transition over, or whether or not we're looking to transition to something else on that front. So answer any questions you may have.
Jonathan, I have a question. You mentioned the, I can't even see my notes now. Where do you get the lights going here? The toolkits.
Yes, sir.
The toolkits, as I understand it, are purchased by Workforce, and they're given to the student, and they're theirs to keep. They graduate to take with them, correct?
Yes, sir. So that's the intent of the program, is that Texas Workforce will fund the cost of that starter toolkit. And the main stipulation is that that soldier gets hired on by a Texas Ford dealer, and they got to start work. So there is that direct connection with working within a dealership. If for some reason the soldier elects not to accept the job offer from that dealer, they'll forfeit that tool.
That's about a $5,000 to $6,000 toolkit.
Yes, sir.
So those of you who see Susan Comas, you be sure to thank her. She worked hard to get that in place with the state. And remember now, the state was asking for all the money back from Workforce for PPE. And she went to the governor's office, all the way to the governor's office, to get that chip. And so she got it for us. But anyway. I'd like to, and there are maybe some other questions? Anybody else have a question?
Yes, sir.
Now, I was reading, and maybe I missed it or something, but it's going to be open to 91 Bravos?
That would be a candidate that we'd heavily recruit.
What about 91 Deltas, small engine repair?
We love diesel techs, too.
Okay.
Yes. Anybody who really possesses strong mechanical skills is really a good candidate for this program. And one of the things that Sergeant Major Tony Waller is going to have to do is really understand what the desire of the individual is. Because there are some that think, maybe I want to fix cars.
The things that we normally do. But I asked them to summarize what we've done a little different, and they're very proud. They sent me four and a half pages of what they're doing, virtually single-spaced. Now, I'm not going to read all four and a half pages to you, but I summarized them, and I think, and I highlighted some of the initiatives I think you'd really be interested in. But they are very, very proud of the work that they're doing to help our students get enrolled. And that shows in what they've written to me. Across all of the areas, and not only in my area, but it reaches out to Dr. Adie's area and Dr. Carter's area, and they'll speak a little bit more about what they're doing there. A lot of the live Facebook initiative-type things that we're doing, we're reaching out to students by giving them information in a live event. They log in, and they can hear about things like how to register, how to apply, all about financial aid. And we have these going on every week, and it's supported by the marketing department. Barbara walks away, they set it up, and it's streamed live for these students, then recorded, and they can go back and watch them. The instructional departments are doing this also, to help our students have access to the people without necessarily coming on campus. The other initiative to give these students this access to our employees to get advised and help with enrollment, help with financial aid, help with everything, are the WebEx chat, which I've mentioned to you before, as well as just WebEx meetings by appointment with all of our advisors. This happens at admissions. This happens through financial aid, through all of my areas. There's access to our employees via technology. We have implemented technology like never before, and I can't see it going away. I really believe the students will continue to want to use that. Now, we see students face-to-face. We're making appointments, and they can come in. And as a matter of fact, Barbara's area created these Take One flyers that you'll see stuck on the outside of certain buildings where students tend to just wander in looking for help. The library over in Student Services Enrollment Building, our building, Building 108, these are out there. So students, if they show up and they don't know what they need to do to make an appointment or to contact someone virtually, they just tear off. These are little flyers to help them do that. It's a great initiative. So thank you, Barbara. On, as far as getting enrolled, getting, and you know that previously, and we, we always, we want to be sure our students are ready for college. But the coordinating board has allowed us to do an exceptional provision to allow students other means of showing that they're college-ready. So we've implemented the ability to use the TSI practice test to give us their score, send us a screenshot of their score, and then we can evaluate that and put them into a college-level course should they do well enough with that. Now, keep in mind, they can take that as many times as they want, but it doesn't do them any good to give us scores that are going to put them in a class that they won't be successful at. And the other thing we have done is for the high school students that may have already taken the TSI and didn't do as well for early college, high school, the freshmen, sophomores, and we're trying to get them into college-level courses. We've been told that we are now allowed to use multiple measures so they can, we can look at their last English class, their last math class, and their GPA, and evaluate whether we believe they're college-ready or not to take a college-level course. Again, like I said, it doesn't do the Again, like I said, it doesn't do the student any good to put them into a college level course that they won't be successful in. It'll just, more than likely, they won't come back if they're not. So we want to be sure that they're ready. We do have, for students that aren't in high school, we do have the co-requisite model too that we really, really push where we put students into a college level course and at the same time into developmental course. That's not new. We've always done that. But these are all measures that we're using to ensure that our students get into the right class. If they do want to take the TSI, they still can, the Texas Success Initiative test. And they can come here by appointment and take it on campus. But we've also implemented something called Examity. The coordinating board is supporting this as well as the College Board who makes the TSI. And a student or a potential student can take the TSI 24/7. They pay us their $25 TSI fee. We issue a voucher. They go online in a special place and they, they take it. They have to pay Examity $7.50 so that they will record the testing session. It's sent to us and it's all flagged. So if they have somebody helping them, it's flagged. And then our testing center would know that there's a concern with this test. So that's, that's available to our students. So that's a great way to get them in and get them into college level courses when they don't have to come to class. And this is available worldwide. They can do that. Another thing we've done is in the past, and this is because of Texas Pathways and other initiatives to ensure students are ready to go to college, we've put advisor blocks in the past on students. So when they apply, they have to see an advisor before they can enroll in college level courses. Well, we've removed all those blocks. So if a student applies, they can enroll immediately at this point. And then we follow up with them about their, you know, what the program is and what classes they want to take. So we do not have any blocks as far as advising blocks on these students' accounts. We're doing many, many other things like evaluating enrollments and moving seats around and, and other things that, that help our students. But keep in mind, across the board, the WebEx is being utilized in every single one of my departments. What's funny is you wouldn't think that the library would be so involved in new students becoming enrolled. But believe it or not, and I would have never thought as a potential student to go to the library for help on getting enrolled in, in class. But the library is getting all kinds of calls and WebEx chats and the students reach out to the library. And so they help the student get enrolled and they refer them to the proper place and they do that. So that was interesting that I didn't even know was happening until I got this, this document that they're, they're, they're doing that. And student success and persistence, they're really doing a lot of virtual work. They're doing virtual online orientations. We had one last week with 75 students and we have one coming up this week. And those virtual, you know, the online orientations, they're open to anybody. And students, even that, even though they aren't a student, may wander into that to kind of get a feel for what we're doing. And student life is very involved with that. So students can hear about what is, what's available on campus. And then of course, in advertising, Barbara's team has really promoted a lot of advertising in various broadcast means. In July and August, it's increased quite a bit. And you saw last month the joint advertising for McClellan and, that we did with McClellan and Temple to help bring students on, as well as many, many, many videos that they've produced to help students learn about programs and learn about what they need to do to get enrolled. The social media postings and the reactions from the students, the clicks and all have increased tremendously. And so that's, that's good news. Students are looking at what we're putting out there on social media. And when I say social media, I mean Facebook, LinkedIn, Instagram, what else? I'm sorry? Twitter. Yeah, can't forget Twitter. Those, those are the social media platforms that, that we really target the students on. But really, for the most part, that's about, about what we're doing and reaching out to students. As they apply, we are doing many, many points of contact, no matter what, what, where they are on the scale of getting enrolled. And Barbara's team is, is doing that as well as Student Services and Student Success and Persistence. So that's my area. Thank y'all.
Any questions, Dr. Garrett?
Yes, any questions?
Thank you. Dr. Adie, I think you're up next.
I am. I told Dr. Garrett by the time she's done, I'm not sure that I have anything to add. So, because her team really provides all the support services, makes it able for students to enroll. So I'll just share with you a little bit by location, what we have going on. As far as central campus, departments are reaching out to students who previously enrolled but are not registered this semester. So anything from Target X email communication to calling students, to using the chat feature is the way we reach out. It's very difficult to really get a clear picture right now where we are on enrollments because the school districts have delayed their enrollments that they give to us, their registration paperwork, because obviously they had a lot of things to work out on their end as far as students coming back to campus or not coming back to campus or virtual or any way like that. So that certainly had an impact on us. And right now we have 1,700 enrollments that have not been entered yet, just from students that are taking courses on the high school campuses. So the ones coming here have been entered. So it makes it a little bit different to compare enrollments this time this year to last year where we were. So nevertheless, we are grateful to have those enrollments and, and we are entering them in. And that's from Colleen and also from Copper's Cove. So we just received the final roster. So at this point, we can verify, yes, these are the students and those are the courses they're in. And then really it goes off to Dr. Garrett's area to get them entered into the classes. So other students normally register themselves, but for the high school students, we do that manually. In the service area, we have virtual meetings with the school districts to see where they stand and, and very similar stories usually that, you know, they give different students, different options. And again, the paperwork to register the high schoolers into college courses has been delayed. But we are receiving them now with school starting. So that is a great part. Also, you've probably heard that the Texas Department of Criminal Justice was not able to hold courses for a little while. They are opening it up to 10 students now. So we just had a conversation earlier today about students enrolling in blended courses. Normally blended means to us here on campus, students take something partially in the classroom and also partially online. Well, we can't do online in the prisons. So for TCJ, the blended option consists of students being in class and also doing a portion of it via packets and homework that they have, that they do on their own. So that's the blended portion. On Fort Hood campus, again, same thing. We're communicating with students, calling them, anyone who hasn't registered. And we also work closely with the Education Center to identify events and things that we can participate in virtually. So, and I honestly, I have to say, it's probably more the Education Center trying to figure out what events they can have virtually that we participate in, that we always support. And finally, the Continental sites, again, we are reaching out to students and a few other initiatives that we started at Fort Rucker and Fort Riley. We were, we are supporting students who are deploying from those sites with multimedia courses. So that's a fairly new initiative. We started at those sites. We, we also don't have all our sites open yet. Most of them are available. Oh, we've got to move. All right. You don't have to see me, just see me. I, I can barely see my notes, but we can do this. So at the Continental sites, not all our sites are open yet, but most of the education centers have opened. It mirrored a little bit what we do, but it seemed like they were a little bit delayed on their functioning. So we do have more online enrollments at those sites than we have, than we've had before. And let's see, we also have initiatives at several of the sites, Riley and Fort Knox, as far as credentialing assistance. As you may know, the military is paying tuition assistance, not only for the college courses, but also for classes that could be non-credit classes that are taught by us that lead to credentialing. And of course, the other training providers as well. So that's another initiative that we're working on as far as boosting enrollments. Are there any questions before I turn it over to Dr. Carter?
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Okay, thank you.
This will be very brief because we are pretty much leveraging everything that we're doing back here on home campus and, and all of those initiatives. So with regard to the Navy and Europe campuses, so when I asked my group, what were they doing in addition to the norm in terms of reaching out to students and, and just seeing them through the registration process and through their courses, et cetera? When I got back from the Navy campus, as you know, we have the San Diego Navy Office. And then the big pieces are NC-PACE program. As you know, that contract ended a couple of years ago, but we are still very much a part of that program. We still provide services. And so for us, the, the biggie is customer service. When I asked Ms. Gerard, I said, what are you doing differently? She said, we've just, we've completely improved our customer service. She did an internal audit of their processes. And so in contracting, we have a term from cradle to grave that you stick with that, that contractor. So with these students, in addition to reaching out to them before their classes, we have Betsy Good, who's our DL manager, who is literally holding their hands through the process until completion. And the good thing is they're telling their friends. When we looked at her enrollments versus last year, she's actually up. And by she, I mean Ms. Gerard with the NC-PACE program. I've received a number of testimonials. So she said for her, the bread and butter is really that improved customer service and that word of mouth amongst the sailors on those ships. In Europe, we are doing the same thing that we're doing back here on main campus and at the Continental sites. However, one, one thing that Europe came up with for their, for their European locations, as well as deploy sites, is they created what's called the virtual office. So on their website, there is a, there's a page and a screen with a button. You can, you can click it or you can scan it and it will actually get you to one of four persons. You will be put in a waiting room, someone will connect with you and then schedule an appointment with you, for you with the site director at any of those locations throughout Europe and downrange. Many of the ed centers are beginning to reopen downrange as well as in Europe. And we are about to send our first person back into the Sinai. She, as a matter of fact, she's on her way to, she, she arrived in Egypt. So she's quarantined for 14 days and that's the first time since the pandemic. So it's, you know, to say that something is fluid, this is a fluid environment, has become so cliche. But for Europe and downrange folks, it really has been so. Again, leveraging everything that we're doing back here, the game changer for them was that virtual office where they able to direct students accordingly. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Our next item on agenda is the Hilltop Holding Incorporated Investment Advisory Services contract renewal.
This item is, the name Hilltop is the parent company of First Southwest, who we have used for years and years, and they have eliminated the First Southwest name completely. So it's, it's just completely Hilltop Holding. This is for our investment advisory services. We currently have a two-year contract with five one-year options. And this will be the request to exercise the second of the five-year options, which still leaves us with three options remaining. We get the absolute best service from these folks that you can imagine. A good enough service to where we were actually making a purchase of an investment one day last week or the week before. That was, and Dr. Carter and I were, were talking back and forth virtually and, and through emails at the same time we were getting ready for this. And they, they provided us what was available, made their recommendation. From that, we looked at it and decided what we were going to purchase and got back with them. Well, before they could even buy it, they then contacted me back and said, you know what, Bob? Another one popped up that's even better. So even though you gave us an order, we held off and waited for you to take a look at this one to see if you might want an opportunity. And it was one that was actually less expensive for them. So in the long run, made them a little less money. But they offered it to us. That's the kind of stuff these guys do. Before, we had gotten back in the CD business years ago. You know, there was a time when we didn't have a single CD because it wasn't worth, worth it. We couldn't find any that were worth, worth our time because they weren't paying anywhere near what we could get the bonds. When that all started back, they actually contacted me and said, hey, Bob, I know our rates aren't that great, but here's a couple of banks you may want to reach out to. I think they can get you CD rates. They don't, they don't get paid for that. If I invest with someone else, they don't make any money off of that. So these guys really care about what we do. They, they want to keep our business. And I'll also tell you, I know we have been using them since before I took the job as the comptroller, when I was the assistant comptroller. So we're probably talking 20 years plus. They have not changed their rates yet. They're still charging us the same rate they did over 20 years ago. So without a doubt, I strongly recommend that we exercise the option on this contract.
Question. You didn't do a price on that?
They pay a rate based upon how much we have invested with them. And it, it is 0.1% of what we have invested with them up to a certain level. And I can't remember off the top of my head what that level is. I can pull it up on my phone. And then the rate actually goes smaller than that once you get a certain dollar amount. Normally it's somewhere around the 30, $30 million level where it caps. And we generally have somewhere right in that range of 30. So, so it's sometimes we're paying exactly the 0.1%. Sometimes we're paying less than that. It ends, it ends up being where we pay them somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 a year annually.
They said recommend the path to CDs that the folks pay through?
Well, they're, what they do is they always, I, I always keep them appraised of where we have, where our ladder is and what we have. And then they make recommendations for us when we have funds that are available to invest based upon a maturity or excess funds that may come in from, from an outside source. And then they will make recommendations on what they can provide us, which is bonds only. But they are very quick to share with us, hey, Bob, this is the best we can do. We think you can get better if you take a look in the CD market right now. Or if you, you know, you may want to hold off two or three weeks, park this in some pools and wait for the numbers to change. So they make those type of investments, recommendations.
Follow-on question is, they are the advisory service, they work for us or they work for the state?
They work for us. They work for us. They are.
What, what happens if they get strong on our compliance with the investment program?
Well, they sign a fiduciary contract. So they, they are responsible on the fiduciary end of, of the contract if it were to cost us financially. If they were to make a recommendation that was outside of what we're authorized to make, which doesn't necessarily cost you financially, but you could get dinged by the, by the state of Texas. Central Texas College takes the beating for that because they're, they're an outside agency and the state of Texas doesn't require you to have an investment advisor. We just choose to have an investment advisor. So they, they do say in their paperwork and their documentation that we, they will ensure that they don't make any recommendations that are outside of our investment policy. I know that our internal auditors, as well as the external auditors, check those all the time. The contract, I'm sure says that if they were to make something like that, that we have the option to cancel the contract at any time, which if they were to do that, I would think after all these years of service, if they, if they made a mistake and they sold us a, a bond that was at one level rated lower than what it was supposed to be, and it was a one-time occurrence, we'd probably have a conversation and wouldn't want to eliminate them. But they are, they are responsible for checking that per their contract, but there's really not anything that would be a major penalty other than us canceling the contract.
Any other questions, Ms. Berry? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
While you're up there, talk to us about the proposed budget because of your 2020, 2021.
Yes, sir. Y'all should have a copy of that in front of you. As you know, we started working on this. As you know, we started working on this January or February. And I printed these last Thursday, so nothing like having extra time in between to get, to get, to get all this done. This year was a year like no other. I've been doing this for a long time and this one was more changes as we worked it than any other budget that I've ever worked on before. And I know you can completely understand that. And those changes start right on page two with the chancellor's message in your leisure. Make sure you read that. But basically it, it talks more about what we've done to cope with the pandemic than what we're doing financially or initiative wise or building wise at the college, which is normally what that message has to do with. But those things have kind of, well, they are extremely important. They're not nearly as important as making sure that our students, faculty and staff are safe. And that's kind of where this message belays. On top of that as well, one of the reasons why there's not a lot of talk in here about building and construction, that's because there is none. This budget has $350,000 in it for construction. There's no doubt that's the less, the least amount I've ever seen in my 31 years out here. And in all honesty, it's only related to the absolute final pieces of the retrofit that was done to the campus. So there's nothing new in there. That's just finalizing that. So I think that's a pretty important to know that that major change was out there. If you flip over to page, I like to look at these summaries. They're, they're really good information on page 13. It's a pie chart on revenue. And you can see where our revenue numbers are from the current year budget to the previous year budget. It's down $12 million, which is pretty significant. That's 10%. If you'll remember when this first started and we had our first meeting after COVID took place. At that point in time, we already started, started talking about the changes we were going to need to make related to the budget for what's going on due to COVID. And quickly off the top of my head, the main things we talked about there was planning for a 20% enrollment decline for the fall semester. Planning for a 10% cut in state funding, planning for a 20% cut for state contracts. I'm sorry, federal contracts through the calendar year. Considering the fact that we would probably receive 5% less of tax revenue, even though we're still going to have a tax revenue that exceeds what it did in the current year. But we've anticipated the fact that maybe not everybody's going to be able to pay like they normally do and that the collection levels will be down. So we've included that in the budget. So when you put all of those things together, we have put all of those in. One of those that I talked about was state appropriations. If you'll remember, I shared with you several months ago, the state basically took 8% from everybody's current year appropriations. But they excluded community colleges. At that time, I said, I was stunned because they've never excluded us from anything that was negative before. So I was really surprised that that happened. And number two, I also said, that doesn't mean they may not come back next year, which is the year that's in this budget. We're hearing a lot of talk that they're looking at 10%. They're not talking about excluding anybody. They're just talking about 10%. I know that most of my counterparts in the state did not build that into their budget, but I built it into ours. I, I went under the assumption that they were going to take 10% of our appropriations back. If they don't, beautiful thing. I would much rather go that way than the other direction. Budget is if we're going to get it, include the expenses, spend the money and then find out we don't have the money to spend. So I, I took that as part of this. So if you see those numbers on there, some of them are extremely different from one year to the next. You see the difference we talked about in state allocation. You see the tuition number, tuition and fees, which is significant. And you know, when you look at a 20% cut to the fall semester, you know, you have to remember that that's not, that's not across the board. Fall semester accounts for about 35% of our total tuition and fees generally. So 20% to 35% is 7%. So if you do the math hard enough and you really want to, you can see where those, where those numbers came from. Some of our locations, we weren't seeing that happen and it was actually not going to be as bad potentially. Other locations that we've talked about, TDCJ, some of our, some of our continental international sites, it, it potentially looks like it may be worse than that. So we made those adjustments accordingly in those numbers. But on the revenue side overall, it's, it's 12%, I'm sorry, 12, $12 million is the overall cut to the budget. That's how much it is now. This also includes, if you'll remember, several months ago, we were awarded CARES funding. $2.4 million roughly for students, $2.4 million for the institution. We've been spending that money as fast as we can spend it to do what needs to be done. There's pieces of it that hasn't been spent yet. There's still time. I know it's, it's, you know, people think, well, heck, today's, you know, whatever it is, 18th, the month is over. We'll spend a lot of that money between now and the 31st. So what I've included in the budget is what I think is going to be left over. But it's revenue and expense both, so it doesn't change your bottom line. But, but that CARES Act, when we first got it, I thought, okay, great, you know? We get to help our students out, which is always a wonderful thing, but we couldn't use it to pay for their tuition and fees. Basically money for them to deal with what they needed to do for COVID. And I didn't, I didn't put a whole lot of credence into how wonderful it was. Well, once we got the institutional money and we dug through what was allowed in that institutional money, which is any, we can basically use that money, do anything that needs to be done to improve our processes and our delivery of education due to COVID is eligible. Well, for us, the biggest thing there obviously is computers, number one. And then also number two, help with the safety, Mr. Harmsen's area for the cleaning, the additional products that we've bought, the different equipment that we've bought to help with this. So if we wouldn't have had that $2.4 million, the picture that we have here, which is not the best of pictures anyways, because of what's happening to us, would have been $2.4 million worth because most of those items, we would have had to buy anyways to keep us up and running, but it would have been 100% on our funds. It wouldn't have been on funds that the federal government provided us. So I'm very pleased and wanted to make sure I pointed that out. If there's no questions or if there are any questions on the revenue side, I'll be more happy to answer those. And then I'll go to the next page, talk about the expense side just a little bit. Okay, next page 14, the expense side. You can see what both sides balance. You know, we're down 12, 12 million on this side as well because revenue expenditure is always balanced in the budget. I guess go to the worst side of it first. If you notice the, the line one up from the bottom above that 107 million, you see $486,000 in the brackets. Basically what I'm saying is this budget balances, but in order for it to balance, we need to take $486,000 out of reserve to get this budget balanced. There are some entities that will present a bubble, a deficit budget and get a deficit budget passed. Some boards like to do that. I don't like to present it that way and I don't think you guys would like to approve it that way. So basically, we historically have moved money from reserve every year to cover our capital expenditures. But this year, we're going to need to, to move an additional 488,000 to get the budget to balance. We are fortunate, as I shared with the chancellor, when this first started, one of the first conversations we had, he called me and said, Bob, how long can we pay people when we're not working? And as you guys all know, for, for some time, we did it when we were, no one was coming on campus. Then we did it for quite some time where some were coming on campus and some folks have not been able to work at all. We've been able to pay them. And that's the same reason we can do that is the same reason we can take this money from reserve. And that's because we have been so fiscally responsible for so long that we have money in reserves to allow us to do this. So I would, I would guess that there are probably going to be very few of the 50 community colleges in the state that have a budget that comes as close to balancing in the year. And that is with the 10% cut I put in for state appropriations. If I'd have left the state appropriations in there at $1.6 million, this budget would balance and it would have $1.2 million to spare. But, but my gut, for those of you that watch NCIS, my gut tells me that the odds are stronger that the state's going to come take some of that money away than they're not. So that's why we put it in this direction. This budget also includes $1.8 million of GAZBIE expenditures that I feel we're going to have. In the current year, we're looking at, right now, GAZBIE is probably going to cost us about a million. So some people would say, well, gee, Bob, why do you think it's going to double almost next year? Part of what those numbers are based on is those two funds, the insurance fund and the retirement fund and the excess money they have, they have all that invested and they based it on an 8% rate of return. Well, I can promise you right now, they didn't get an 8% rate of return based upon what has happened. So they are not going to be able to, they didn't hit that benchmark. And with them not hitting that benchmark, I've got a feeling that, that we're going to be woefully behind and it's going to cost them more. And they're going to pass more that along to us. As a reminder, we don't write, we don't write a check for that. They don't actually take money out of our pocket. We just have to record pen and ink entry and it, and we have to report it. And it looks like we've lost money on it, but it's just a, currently it's just a financial entry. We're not writing a check to anybody. One of those things, if you remember the very first time it came out, I said, don't be surprised if someday they ask us to write a check for that. I know they keep saying they're not, but the very first accounting class I ever took said, don't put it on your balance sheet unless you expect to either pay it or receive it. Well, they're telling me to put it on my balance sheet. I'll leave it at that. Get off, get off my, my horse on that one. But if you look at these numbers, we have, this budget couldn't have come anywhere close to balancing like it did if it wouldn't have been for the fact that when we sent the instructions out, we asked everyone that prepared a budget to cut at a minimum 8% from their budgets. As a general rule, we got 8% cuts. Some departments, there's not, there's nothing you can cut. If you've got a one-person department and you really don't spend any money, and I'll make a perfect example, Doug Barton, there's nothing you can cut from Doug's budget. Doug, Doug spends about $200 a year on supplies at the most and, and he's one-person shop. There's, there's not 8% you can take out of his budget, but there are other budgets that you could get more out of. As a general rule, I got 8% that I needed. We were in really good shape, but there will be some folks out there when they see their budgets that notice Bob took a little more than they said they could, they could live with because that's the only way I get this budget and we're close to where I needed it to be. So thank you for what you gave, but I appreciate you going even deeper, I guess is what I'm saying. And you'll see it when you get your budgets. There shouldn't be anything out there people can't live with, without, you know, there might be a few little nice things that we'd like to get that we're going to have to wait a little longer. But as soon as these enrollment initiatives that we're working on kick in and our enrollments start coming up, we'll have more money to spend. So we'll be able to go that direction. So that's, that's in a nutshell, your revenue and expenditure breakdown. Anybody have any questions on the expenses or what I've done with any of those?
Any questions, Mr. Liberty? Great presentation, Bob. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
You've got the budget draft there before you, we'll be voting on it next Tuesday. So if you have an opportunity to go through it, any questions, don't hesitate.
Absolutely. I'm sure all y'all have, those of you that don't have my cell phone number, you can sure get it if you want it. Please call me if you have any questions when you start looking at this between now and, and the board meeting. I'll be more than happy to, to answer them. What, what I anticipate doing next week, obviously, is what we'll do, we'll, we'll start the meeting as we generally do, sir, and we'll, we'll approve the tax rate first and then we'll, then we'll, we'll roll out right into this budget. I am waiting on final confirmation from, from the county on if we need to actually call that first item a public hearing or just call it a vote there, you know? I've probably seen, Dr. Carter, what do you think, a thousand emails easily in the last three weeks? When I asked the first question of the other CFOs in the state, this is, hey, guys, here's what I think we're supposed to do based on the statute. What the county has told me, what do y'all think? And I kid you not, there's probably been a thousand emails and 850 of them have a different, have different opinions. So we're, we're going to go with what we think is right, what the county tells us they think is right. But at the, at the present moment, I'm not exactly sure what that is because her and I are still pushing back and forth on that. I don't think we're going to have any grief whatsoever because the fact that we're not, we're not raising our tax rate. We could have very easily gone with a rate above the, the rate that was the no new revenue rate and been well within our means. Most everybody else in our local area is doing that. And we're going to be one of the few that actually have lowered it to that number, maybe the only one. So I feel confident that we won't have any heat, no matter what we do.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Liberty and Dr. Carter for all the hard work they did to pull this budget together. It was not easy. A lot of, a lot of pains going on and, and last minute things right up until he said last week to get this thing printed, even get it printed. So again, it's a testament to the knowledge base that, that they all have and the willingness that we all have to work together to make this happen. So without that, we wouldn't have a balanced budget. I can tell you that talking to other community colleges, they're, they're turning their eye away from a lot of things, GAZBIE. They're not, they're saying, we're not going to have that just included. So there's a lot of things that, that we put in this and, and I can tell you, and Bob can tell you better, but that as we go through the year, we, we constantly look at ways to make up that revenue shortfall. So don't think that we, don't think we don't do that. We will be doing that as we go through the year. Again, thank you.
Yes, sir. And on top of that, just to point one other thing out, you and I talked about it the last time we actually talked on the phone. Even though we've cut this budget drastically, I guarantee you, guarantee you, we will not spend every penny that's in this budget. We never do. We never have. I asked, I asked the chancellor, I said, sir, you've been here 15 years longer than I have. You ever remember spending every penny in the budget? He said, no. So we'll be fine. There'll be, there'll be some folks that will squall a little bit, but we'll, we'll take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Our next item on the agenda is the facilities management contract renewal.
Good afternoon. We have some option periods that need to be renewed for various vendors of the college. Each of these contracts have an initial base year of one year with four one-year option renewals. The first one is Heights Lumber. I'm just going to lump all these together just for ease of discussion. The first one will be Heights Lumber. We're going to be an option period one. We typically use those for hardwood products, building product supplies, grounds, construction-related product. Estimated spend is not going to exceed $400,000. It's actually up from this prior year, but that's because we've included some of our COVID-related expenses and purchases that we'll be using through Heights. So we, we bumped that number up a little bit for this upcoming year. Next is Impact Fire. They're on option period three. They perform all of our regular testing, repairs, maintenance of our fire alarm and suppression systems throughout campus. They're in the third year option period and the estimate is not to exceed $250,000, which is pretty normal for each year. PBK, they're in option period one. You're familiar with them. They're an architect and engineering firm. We have very few projects, actually, it's just finishing up as Bob had referenced, the infrastructure project. We did include a, an estimate that would not exceed $500,000. That's probably significantly high because we're not going to be planning on spending any additional dollars at this point on new projects. And all we have is remaining projects on the infrastructure that we need to go ahead and take care of. The last contract is Texas Materials. They're in option period one. If you remember, we spent $950,000 with them in the prior year, refinishing a lot of the asphalt works on the west part of campus. All that work was completed. Estimated spend is probably not going to be less than $50,000. And that's if we need them for some minor repairs or some other seal coating or something throughout campus. So I would expect that to be minimum as well. So with that, we'll be bringing these next week for renewals.
Yes, sir.
Where is PPK with? Where is uh, PBK with uh, the master plan? Is it just suspended for now or?
Well, we, we held off on it, they're essentially done. We gave the report out, a couple, actually, I think it was a while back there, it's probably right before the whole COVID outbreak. Uh, they were working on the final report, which we were gonna bring back. Um, we actually have held off because, because we, there was actually capital spend that was anticipated for this coming fiscal year, but because we're cutting back, we've actually rolled that and pushed everything forward for a year. So they're making those adjustments and we were actually waiting to bring it back to the board for approval, probably in the spring. If you prefer, we could do it earlier, but since we weren't undergoing any major capital projects, we figured we could push that off for the spring and be fine.
Any other questions, Mr. Tom? Just like to make a comment, your improvement on the east entrance off of Clear Creek Road is looking really good.
Yeah, we have uh, a company, it's probably out there today. They were out there yesterday, they were refinishing the Central Texas College sign and so uh, they should be finishing that up hopefully within the course of the next week. And I think it'll really, it really pops when you come in that entrance and you drive by that, uh, you're entering the campus.
This is not directly in line, but related about a year ago when I first joined the Department of uh, Highway agreed to redo our sign. Did they give us a timeframe period on when they thought they could get that done?
Yeah, so um, we had conversation with them. Um, and I think we actually went to the board and approved that we would change the bell tower um, entrance there. Uh, in further conversations with them, they're now telling us it's going to cost dollars to do that. So we're still in having some conversations. So somewhere along in the line, either they made a commitment, they didn't have the ability to make when we had that conversation, or they then found out that, oh, uh, you know, we can't just go ahead and change it out like we thought we could. So uh, we're still having some conversations, so nothing has been done as of this point. Uh, and we'll, we'll continue to pursue it because they had made a commitment. But I, I can't force them at this point to go ahead and change it out even though they agreed to it.
Is there some reason, is it tradition that we have a contract and that number of option periods?
You mean the, in, in these particular contracts here? Usually we will go ahead and do it, one, it helps to try to go ahead and recruit. Um, so we have companies that are interested in putting in a, a, an option or a bid for potential work. Um, it, it takes several months to go through the RFP or the RFQ process. And so in order to kind of streamline that for us, we usually put in a consistent number of four-year option periods.
I don't remember seeing any six-year, seven-year, eight-year, ten-year contracts.
No, we, we've limited them, at least on the construction side, and I, I don't know, I'd probably have to defer to Ted, but since I've been here, we've limited them basically to four uh, option periods for the most part. You may see some periodic ones. Um, our elevator contract is one that will, will renew. Other than that, I think most of them end usually within four to five years. Is that?
Didn't know if there was a reason or a tradition or a common plan, five-year plan.
So we do, we do not operate technically per se as a state agency. We are, um, in some cases considered a political subdivision. But the state of Texas really frowns upon you doing uh, ten-year contracts simply because they wanna ensure that you're competing um, on a regular basis to ensure that you're always getting the best price. Obviously, if you hold something for ten years static a decade, you are likely to see fluctuations within the market. So take currently, right now, the COVID situation. If I was locked up in a ten-year contract, um, I could potentially lose a lot of money versus we have these one-year option periods where every year we come to you and say, may we exercise this? But in that case, we actually evaluate to make sure it's within the best interest of the college, whether or not we're gonna lose money or whether we have to renegotiate the contract itself. So uh, that's kind of why the practice is.
Any other questions, Mr. Tom?
The only thing that I was gonna mention there is, there are times that we actually get better pricing when we go back out for bid and they know that we're competing this as opposed to having one company think that they're gonna have it for seven, eight, nine, ten years. We've also seen where some uh, companies, they, they get a false sense of security where they think they can just kind of lay back and, and maybe not service us at the same level that we expect. Uh, and so when we let them know that we're gonna be going back out to bid, and there may be times that if a vendor is not meeting our needs, we'll go back out to bid and do it anyway. Um, even though the, the op, we do have available option periods because we wanna make sure we're doing the best thing for the college.
Does it have a three and four year?
Well, most everything through at least facilities and that's all I can speak about at the moment. We, we try to be as consistent as possible with the one year and then four additional option periods. So that's, it seems to work for us, so we just talk with it.
Really don't need the one, two, and three year if every year you get your face and then every year you're exercising that next following year, maybe kind of eliminates you having a single.
Yes, sir.
Um, I want to caveat on what Mr. Hollinger was talking about with the, the, and it was Mr. Armstrong's uh, motion about the bell tower, street signs and stuff, and changing the, the name of it. Uh, I believe that was like last July or last August when we voted on it. And there was a monetary value put on the change out on those. Um, about how much more are they talking about it would cost to change those signs out than what we were voting on?
I think uh, when I've, uh, we've been working, uh, when we've worked with them, I think it was around thirty thousand dollars.
Okay, so what are they saying it would be now?
Oh, we had, we, we, with some of the COVID stuff, we haven't specifically gone back and approached them. So this was right before some of the, the COVID, but at that time it was around thirty thousand dollars. So I'm guessing that it hasn't changed, but I, that's not, that hasn't been something uh, since we approached them uh, originally that we were, that I wanted to come back to the board and say, are we willing to go ahead and spend thirty thousand dollars? When uh, we wanted to see if we could continue to go ahead and try to work something out with them.
What was the, what was?
No, it was zero. Yeah, they, they told us, when we went up there and met with them, we met with them in person. Uh, we had Ken Jordan, the uh, um, the director for facilities construction, construction, went up and actually met in person with Tech Scott and the gentleman up there in Waco said that there was no cost. And that's when we came back and uh, had, then I had presented to the board that we were gonna go ahead and uh, make the recommendation of going ahead and changing out the name. After that, we're like, okay, the board approved it, let's go back and see if we can move forward. And then uh, I was like, oh, well, uh, wait a minute, I guess uh, you know, a lot of stuttering and uh, uh, I don't know whether he actually, at the time, had the authority to go ahead and make that particular decision or didn't feel like we were actually gonna go through with making the uh, the request. But he had uh, then come back and said, well, you know, it's gonna cost and the estimate was roughly thirty thousand dollars.
It was thirty thousand for the bell tower road sign, that's all?
The highway sign? As you go through, that's, that uh, I think there were three of them. Um, at least the, you have the large one coming in both directions. I want to say that there were three of them, uh, and the, so the total for all three of those, I believe, was about thirty thousand dollars.
Quite a bit amount of money. When uh, so, but you heard about this back in March before the COVID hit?
Uh, sometime before COVID, yes.
Okay, well, uh, I'll talk later.
I, we, we didn't wanna, I mean, I, I guess I could have, I mean, if you're asking, could I have brought it back to the board?
I mean, I didn't want to put you on the spot about that.
No, no, I, I.
But that's uh, that's, I mean, we voted on that and, and every time, I can tell you personally, every time I go west and eastbound on aisle fourteen, because I live in Copper's Cove, and so I see those signs all the time. And I look at it every time, I'm like, when are they gonna change the signs out? Uh, because I bragged to my daughters, like, hey, look at this, it's, it's Central Texas College Boulevard. Um, and, and you know, that, that's really cool, a lot of people like that. Um, but it wasn't happening, but we didn't have any idea that there was a play on it or a disruption.
And for that, I apologize, but I wasn't, I guess I wasn't willing to give up on the fact that, you know, we may still be able to, to try to get them to go ahead and do it or at some type reduced amounts and say we're doing it. So um, I, I, the intent is still for us to go ahead and try to do it at no cost. I can, we can certainly make sure that we uh, uh, come back to the board in a, in a month or two and say, okay, here's basically where we're at. We, you know, either escalated at Tech Dot and, you know, can't get anywhere else, here's what the cost is and then decide, do we wanna go ahead and spend the additional dollars or just leave it as it is?
I can assure you under the circumstances, we won't be bringing that to the board for approval.
Okay. I was, I was just bringing it up because bad news delayed is still bad news.
Well, I think the attempt is, and, and the intent is that, and of course you can't, you can't even hardly meet with Tech Dot or anybody in government right now. So, so I'm, I'm sure Mark is kind of twiddling his thumbs, when can I get to these folks at Tech Dot to ask them the question? You know, you made us a promise, we took it to our board, we voted on it, and then you reneged on it. So where, where are we? You know, we could have those conversations, but currently, you, you can't find anybody to have those conversations that are competent enough in their system to give us the right answer. So he can't meet with anybody that's gonna give him a yes answer. He can only meet with people that are giving a no answer. So I, I, I don't think that at this point, it's, it benefits him to, to, to engage them. I think we need to wait a little while. Uh, you know, the highway's not going anywhere, the sign's there, we, we've been using it for twenty, thirty years and as soon as we can get it changed, we will do that. Uh, but yeah, so.
I appreciate James raising the question, but also I see this as a work in progress going on.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't feel that you ought to be under any pressure to get an answer.
Because the signs are damaged.
I'm assuming they go ahead.
Hope they don't charge us.
You know, they could, they could end up, you know.
Maybe have to wait for the next ice storm, I guess.
Well, you know, you and James could drop down to Austin and confront them.
Is this part being recorded?
Yeah. We, we will certainly do what we can to go ahead and try to continue to have conversations. I mean, you know, it, I, I don't like coming before the board, actually going ahead and making a recommendation, the board approving that and then not being able to do that. So we still uh, wanna do everything we can to go ahead and try to make that happen. If, like I said, we cannot, then we can look at what are our next options.
But we appreciate what you're doing and uh, we understand that that happens broadly, especially when they don't come to work. Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, I think you're up next to talk to us about the annual fifty thousand vendor list for the fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
Yes, sir. Um, good afternoon, members of the board. I'm here to seek board approval of the fifty K list. If you recall, the fifty K list authorizes administration to issue blanket purchase orders to vendors on the list of goods and services for purchases of fifty thousand or more in aggregate during the fiscal year beginning September one, twenty twenty. Please note that all vendors on the fifty K list are either part of a cooperative or under contract and were procured in accordance with Texas statutory law and CTC policies and procedures. I further want to note that due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, you will likely have noticed year-to-date spending contracted. Spending for the college came to a crawl in late March when the administration took immediate action to curb spending on all items in anticipation of further slowing in the economy. Thus, all year-to-date expenditures are down compared to last fiscal year. Do you have any answer any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Gonzalez? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Next item on our agenda is to recommend the topics, I mean, agenda items or announcements. So, Mr. Armstrong?
No, sir, thank you.
About a year ago, we approved a massage program, but I don't think I remember seeing any press on it lately or I was wondering how that was coming along. He said it'd probably take three years to break people for about a year end.
I think we're gonna have to hold off on that one because uh, you can't touch anybody now. You, you can't do it. I mean, it's physically impossible to train and soothe and sedate.
There's.
Okay.
Yeah, it's. So I've probably add another year to that. Well, you can give us something, thanks for coming in.
I have several members of my family that are involved in education from being students in public schools and being educators, college level. Uh, so I've been in touch with all the different institutions about how they're handling all this COVID process. And uh, it just reinforces for me how effective and how uh, significant our leadership of the chancellor and his staff have enacted process activities, so forth, the phases and the care. And so I just wanna compliment our chancellor and his staff on uh, everything I'm hearing. We stand head and shoulders above, or I'm hearing some, some educators saying, well, we just thought that we maybe ought to consider this. I said, we, we have leadership that considered it back in March, we, we're way ahead of everybody, so thank you.
Thank you.
And he hasn't taken me out to eat lately, so.
Okay, I knew something was coming, but uh, let me, can I, can I make a comment about?
Well, let's see if the board members.
Okay, okay.
Matthew, sir?
I just wanna piggyback on what um, Pastor Towers said, what Pastor Towers said in reference to our communication um, by the, um, by the um, the staff. Um, I found myself listening when we first received the written notification was when I, I think I shared it previously, that I was incredibly proud of where we were from the very start in our communication. My daughter teaches kindergarten in another state and as of last week, they still were not prepared for the kids to come back Monday. So, and she just texted me this morning before the board meeting that one of her students tested positive. So it's just um, you don't, you have to compare it in order to have an appreciation for what you guys have accomplished is that you have to compare it to something else or see someone else struggle. And I, and even our local districts have suffered greatly. Uh, but you guys made it seem effortless in your communication to us and I really appreciate that also.
Thank you. I, I just, I wanna make a comment, uh, you know, I have to agree that, that you're right and we did, we did that intentionally. And I had asked Dr. Carter to champion the team to uh, for our reopening. And so she, with the other deputies, worked very hard to pin out what those phases were gonna be, those six phases. Most all the colleges and all the community colleges in Texas waited until the, the Higher Education Coordinating Board gave them directive on, on what to do, which didn't occur until about two weeks ago, you know? And they waited and I kept saying, you know, you're gonna wait to the point where you're gonna have, you're gonna have these issues. Well, they were all intent on saying, you know, all their students back in class, back in the dormitories. And so now they've fallen away from that, they've stumbled a lot and, and many of them are still, they can't get it. We're going into phase four next week, they can't get out of phase one. So uh, you know, again, it's, it's a testament to everybody here and how we did that. We erred on the side of, of hell. And you know, I said, I'm gonna be criticized whichever way I go, but you know, that's the way I'm going. So one of the things that you, if you notice, North, University of North Carolina, uh, they opened a week and a half ago and they've now shut down. Our faculty uh, embraced this change and we had a choice, you know? Come back face to face, we, not everybody likes online, I understand that. But we have, we had to do something to provide instructions. And so one of the things that the faculty came up with was synchronized uh, learning, uh, virtual learning, uh, virtual lecture. It's called synchronized virtual lecture, I think is now the term that they've coined. Uh, but they see students face to face, the students see them and see each other and they can actually teach, so it's, it's, it's online. Uh, many students uh, are going to continue that effort and I think that's one thing, the one good thing, and I talked to the faculty. the one good thing, and I talked to the faculty this morning, one of the good things with, that's come out of this is they're, uh, embracing that, that method. That wasn't my idea. That was, I don't think it was any of the deputies. I think it was truly theirs. They, I think going forward, now we have another platform where we can offer these courses because a lot of students can't come to school for a plethora of reasons. Uh, but that, this gives us an opportunity to push those out. And although those students don't like online, it's, it's too, uh, impersonal for them. So, uh, but this gives, uh, folks in the future another way to take our classes. So, uh, going forward, we'll have face to face. We'll have online. We'll have blended. We'll have mixed media and we'll have this virtual platform. Thank you.
I think it's been really magnificent team effort and the leadership. We're very thankful that we've got people in place and we have. Hopefully, we can get over this COVID nonsense. I just personally don't think the government has done us any favors shutting everything down. I was spent thirty minutes trying to get out of those. So, you know, things are, are all about different. The announcement of a regular board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. The board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, September the fifteenth of twenty twenty. And for lack of a better, we'll just plan on meeting in the same conditions we are right here. At this juncture, we have an executive session, so I'd ask the board, please, uh, adjourn here and go to the regular board meeting room. We've got some paperwork to sign.
I wanna thank Mr. Armstrong for being here today. Thanks, sir. We missed you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet. Did you have a meeting with him? Look at baby. Baby with dresses. Looks like the Godfather. Bob, who's the guy that sits in the back of the Italian restaurant?